And I am so pleased that so many of you have turned out for this first community conversation sponsored by the Flagler County Democratic Black Caucus. This is one of the mechanisms that we hope to use to invigorate political activity in our community and to bring about a greater impact by our community on the political process here in the area where we live. Our mission is to educate and mobilize African-American voters to more actively participate in local, state, and federal electoral processes, from the recruitment of candidates to campaigning, and most importantly, to voting. And as an important component of this involvement, we want to identify and prepare more African-Americans to be successful candidates for elective and appointed public service positions. And the 2026 midterm elections are our next best opportunity to imprint our presence on the political process, locally and elsewhere. So unfortunately, our greatest challenge with the midterms is generating this level of excitement and interest that usually goes with a national presidential election. And that occurs across all spectrums of the voting public. Interest wanes during off-year elections despite the fact that these local, district, state elections have a greater impact on our well-being and our daily lives. And so while the midterms do not have the glamour component of national elections, they put into positions of influence and power people who have a tremendous impact on our daily lives. They impact our property taxes, the quality of our roads, the availability of affordable housing, and on and on. The point that I want to make is that we need to pay attention, we need to be involved. The correction of our situation requires our active participation. And tonight's conversation is the first building block in our efforts to prepare our community for greater involvement in our local, district, and state governance. First, we want to understand the respective roles of the positions of the governmental agencies that directly impact our daily lives. Then we must understand the roles of the positions in those agencies that are designed to implement the agency responsibilities. We want to know and understand the people who staff these agencies. And finally, and most importantly, we want people from our community to be among those sitting in those seats of power. And that is, this is the start of a process where we hope to bring that to reality. There is no doubt that we understand, know that life as we know it today, democracy as we know it, is under attack. And many of our longstanding institutions of democracy and political life have been damaged or destroyed. But the process of restoring those and keeping our democracy alive, in my opinion, begins right here at home. And so tonight, we have invited to have a discussion with us Commissioner Andy Dance, who has been a public servant here in Palm Coast for some time. He brings to us a great deal of experience and knowledge about local conditions and so forth. And we are going to be... Oh, my. Is that for me? Probably is. It's actually a call from the African-American Caucus. They don't know that I'm already here. And so we're pleased to welcome Commissioner Dance to join in conversation with us. And please join me in a round of applause for Commissioner Dance. Commissioner, thank you very much for joining us this evening for this discussion. And I'd like to start off by asking you a couple of questions about the county commission and its role in our lives. What is the relationship between the county and the city of Palm Coast? Where does one's responsibility begin and the other begin?
All right, great question. First, can I just thank everybody for being here? It's an honor for me to be here. Mr. Lightfoot, thank you for the invitation. I appreciate that, and giving me the opportunity to come here tonight just to speak to the Democratic Black Caucus. And thank you to the ACS for hosting this. It's a, I'm happy to see, you know, the basis for this as a conversation. And I had some prepared remarks, so the different papers that you have. One of them was an outline that I was gonna follow, but we're switching to the Q and A early, which is fine, I'm good either way. I just want to let you know what's in your seat. There's a flyer, the one with the yellow dot, which is budget summaries for the county. And we may get to some of those later. I just wanted to let you know that there's information here we might refer back to. Again, thank you for the question, one that I get asked frequently. And it's a topic online conversation about who does what. So I think the biggest takeaway from that is that the county is a constitutional county, and our roles are designated by statute. So we, within our budget, have to fund the sheriff's office, the tax collector, the property appraiser, the clerk of courts, and then the different county operations as well. So those are embedded in what we do. The city has its own charter, and they function based on the charter that was approved back around 2000, and when they became an incorporated city. A lot, there's some overlap, but there's some differences in what we do as well. We each have fire departments, but the county runs the emergency management system. So when the ambulance, the fire rescue comes, that's county-run. And depending on where you live, either in the city or unincorporated, either the county or the city firefighters will come out. We pay the majority within that sheriff's budget. We pay that for the countywide functions, but the city has elected to pay some additional, what they call enhancements, to the basic service of the sheriff's office. So built within the city's budget is additional funding for the sheriff's office to meet the level of service that the city has required or requested of the sheriff.
I notice, I notice that there's a significant component of our property taxes allocated to the county. How are those decisions made? How is the allocation decided between the county and the city?
Well, we operate our own different budget processes. So the city establishes their millage for properties that are within the city limits of Palm Coast. County millage is countywide. And thus, because those services that I mentioned, the constitutional officers are countywide offices. Our budget process, I'll basically go through our budget process, which starts in December with goal-setting. So we'll start looking at what our priorities are, and then have conversations amongst the commissioners and the administration about where do we want to see first and foremost funds going. We're gonna estimate based on where we think the property value increases are gonna go. That kind of sets where our budget is gonna be. And then, so we talk vaguely in rough figures in December. And last year, we talked about the beach was one of our priorities because we knew we were gonna have to dedicate a significant amount of funds for beach fortification and beach re-nourishment. And it's that time where we really value public input. So when we do public hearings or our budget hearings, those are times when the community input is valuable for us.
Let me ask. Now, I live roughly seven miles from the beach. Why should I be expected to contribute to the restoration of the beach?
That's a great question. The beach is a significant contributor in many ways to the lifestyle and the quality of life within Fliva County. It's one of our major tourist draws, if not the largest tourist draw. And there's a significant amount of jobs associated with tourism within the county. So by protecting the beach, by re-nourishing it, and making sure it thrives for the long term, we're basically propping up and establishing that portion of our economy so that it doesn't wither away, or we lose tourism based on the beach and the quality of our beaches. There are more direct benefits for people that live on the barrier island because they're directly affected by storms and the effects of storms on that coastal environment. But countywide, there is a very good argument that everybody within the county sees a value in their percentage, be it small in their property values because of their proximity, even seven miles to the beach. If you go online and you look at Realtor marketing for any place within Palm Coast, they acknowledge the proximity and the closeness to the beach and the beach environment. So that's a, there's a definite, I can make a really good argument, that the benefits are countywide, and the value, everybody should be contributing countywide to the beach.
Sure. This question just popped into my mind, which is dangerous sometimes, but has the county ever considered a declining payment based on distance from the beach? I understand that people who live right on the beach or very close to the beach have a greater interest in beach restoration. But what about people who are 10, 15 miles away from the beach? Is it possible they should pay a lesser amount because there's a lesser impact on their quality of life?
I think early on, we're gonna go back almost a year ago, when we first had one of our meetings about consultants that put together a study on how to pay for the beach. And one of the, one of the first suggestions was that type of staggered approach. What we ended up kind of circling back on was a half penny sales tax, an additional half penny of what we pay. It's a consumption tax, so people from all over would contribute. We have tourists, about 30% of that overall tax comes from outside visitors to the county. So we get about 30% of those funds raised from visitors. And that was really, I think, one of the more palatable options that we had, that we spent a lot of time trying to, hoped that the commission would back that idea. But that didn't have the backing of the four commissioners that we needed to push it. So we are having discussions now about the, you know, alternative ways of trying to fund beach fortification and beach re-nourishment.
Sure, okay. Thank you. Now, as I drive from here, I come down Matanzas Woods Parkway and travel in this direction. I see hundreds of homes being built. I hear of increasing development in the Bonnell area and over toward Town Center, et cetera, et cetera. And just this afternoon, I got a piece of news on the phone about the possibility of a new Walmart on Route 100 that would further increase traffic in that area. How does the county try to control, or does the county try to control growth and development in a reasonable way? And what consideration do they make for development of infrastructure to support all of this development?
That's a great question, and it goes back to the very first question about county versus cities. So each, each of those governments have home rule over their areas. So the city of Palm Coast has the authority to make decisions within the city of Palm Coast. So development decisions that happen within the city are done by the city council. In Bonnell, the decisions on those two developments that are working their way through the process will be voted on by the Bonnell commissioners. So, and likewise, anything in the unincorporated area. The projects that you specifically mentioned are all in city limits and not in the unincorporated part of the county. But it does bring forward the issue of being able to work together so that, you know, residents don't necessarily know where the city limits end. They continue on a path, and they go through the city of Bonnell, into the unincorporated, and then back into Palm Coast. So they, they wanna make sure that we're all talking together and making decisions based on information from all of us. And we have provided, the county has provided input to the city of Palm Coast on that commercial development that's being annexed in from the unincorporated county into Palm Coast, where the next big box retail is gonna go. When the city of Bonnell proposed their two developments, our planning team in the county worked with the city of Bonnell to make sure that large items were being discussed, like fire prevention, fire services, roadways, making sure that there was going to be capacity or that there would need to be improvements for certain roadways. So I would say that while we don't make those decisions everywhere in the county, we are part of that communication and process with the, with the city's planning team or the city of Bonnell's planning team. And all the different elected officials talk amongst each other. So, you know, I'm not shy of making my thoughts known to the other commissioners or councilmen on what I see as wrong or what needs to be done.
I don't mean to get you in trouble, but is there a good relationship currently between the county and the city on these matters?
I would say, you know, you mentioned my longevity and elected service. So I would say, right now, we probably have the best working relationship that we've ever had with the city of Palm Coast. Our administrators work really well together, our, like, say, the planning team. Our planning team in county works seamlessly with the city of Palm Coast. So there's a lot of overlap and a lot of good discussion that goes on. So, you know, they, and they, the leaders all meet regularly. So the city administrators, Fliva Beach, Bonnell, Palm Coast, the other smaller cities, get together on a regular basis and get together and talk about issues. So I'd say countywide, those intergovernmental relationships are really good right now.
And just to interject here, for those of you who may have some questions of your own, there will be an opportunity for some audience participation at the end of our discussion. So just hold on. If you're like me, half of those questions will be forgotten by the time we get to the end. But if you can hold on to them, there will be an opportunity for you to speak. Now, another issue that I think is sort of relevant to many of the people in this crowd, most of us are beyond our child-rearing, school-going years, and yet we're paying a sizable amount of money to support a school system. What, what position does the county take regarding, again, why are all of us paying into the school system when we have no interest in it? No direct interest. I understand the indirect interest, but...
That's what we do. We, for the betterment of our community, I think the strong school system is the bedrock of the community. So I think we all know that even at this stage in our life, if we don't have children going to the school district, it's our responsibility to have a strong school system. I mean, we rely on, those same students are the ones that are, that we're going to see when our back is at a joint, or, you know, we need, we need some medical help, or the nurses that are taking care of loved ones at home. Those are all the same students that we 10 years ago supported and went through the school district. So for, from our community, it's critically important that we continue to support public education. And on that same note, the county has a really good working relationship with our current superintendent and their staff. I think if you've read the news, we contribute over half a million dollars to school resource deputies to make sure that our schools are safe and have sheriff deputies on campus to protect those campuses and to protect the staff and the children. And the county contributes, it's more than 500,000 now, but the school district wouldn't be able to have deputies in the schools without the county's contribution.
Now, you realize, of course, that, or people of my age, the notion of the school resource officer, which is a fancy name for a school policeman, that was a foreign notion to us when we were coming along. It's a sad commentary on our current society that this kind of thing is necessary. I understand the need for it, but it's really a shame that we have come to that. All right, so we have children, families that are raising children, they're not yet at retirement age and so forth. That brings up, at least in my mind, the whole question of affordable housing. And if we look at, I think we, I know there are a couple of real estate agents in the room, the average home cost in Palm Coast is, what, 350, 400, 1000, or something like that? Are these working, child-rearing families able to afford to live in Flagler County?
Great questions. I can say from experience, my children now are, have moved out. They are 27, 25, and 23.
You're lucky I have a 37-year-old granddaughter still waiting to die.
And my first, my first, who's my daughter, is getting married next weekend, so our first marriage within our family, so it's a very exciting time.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. But I will say that...
Are they gonna live with you?
No, no, they're all moved out. They've all moved out. But early on, when they got out of school and were building, had gotten their degrees and were starting to build their life, you know, have solid jobs, but finding a place to own if you were gonna buy, right? They haven't saved up enough money yet, so getting that initial down payment is very hard. And then finding a cheap enough place. My first, my first and second child ended up having to find an apartment in Daytona Beach. So they were not able to find anything affordable here in town. So they started off down in Daytona Beach. And I will say that, you know, the, my third child, who has been fortunate to have done well at work his first few years, has probably enough for the down payment, but just isn't ready to locate yet, find that permanent place. So he's still kind of, you know, transient, if you will, although he has an apartment now. But it's a, it's a big issue, right? So getting back to the topic, it's a big issue. And I can tell you from the county's standpoint, it is, we have adopted our land development code to be able to accommodate people that want to build affordable housing. We have a new planned development section in our code that has a ton of flexibility, including abatements on impact fees and other issues. So if somebody comes to us with an opportunity in land, we're able to work and be very creative with them on being able to put a product in the unincorporated county. The most important one is just making sure that it has utilities. Usually, we're talking multifamily with a density, and the county just doesn't have a utility. So in many instances, they're not looking at the unincorporated county to build these, they're looking at the city of Bonnell or Palm Coast where they have a utility system that they can connect to so that they have water and sewer.
Okay. I'm gonna come back to the utility question in a moment, but it is my understanding that every state has a program to assist first-time homebuyers and low-income families in the process of purchasing a home. Does Flagler County participate or present any of those types of programs to its residents?
Well, I think you answered that in your question. So they are gonna be state programs. We don't have anything within, we do have things through our, I would say, through our Health and Human Services. There are programs through, where we do get some state funds that we can offer some assistance. It's not nearly enough, I would say, and it's, so it's limited. But if anybody needs some of that assistance, we can go through our Health and Human Services Department for that. You know, we have a Affordable Housing Advisory Committee that meets monthly to make sure that we are as up to speed on our affordable housing policies as we can be. They, they kind of do their due diligence in scouring, you know, land development codes and policies statewide, and bring those ideas back to us to make sure that we're, you know, as up to speed as we can be.
So if someone in this audience has a friend or relative who is interested in the available state support, such as it is here in the county, where do they go? Who do they...
I would direct them to our Housing Services Director. It's Devery Perdowski, and she is in the Health and Human Services Department.
Okay. Just to expand on that a bit, for those of you who may not have heard of these programs, every state has a program where first-time homebuyers may receive grants or loans, loans which can be, usually are forgiven after a period of time if you remain in the home. And I think whether or not citizens have access to these programs depends a bit on their own assertiveness in pursuing the programs. As Andy has just mentioned, they have limited funds of that type here in this area. But for those of you who might know someone that would be interested in accessing one of those programs, the Human Resources Department?
Health and Human Services.
Health and Human Services at the county would be the place for you to go to try to at least learn about one of those programs and access whatever funds might be available. And I see the real estate agents in the audience, you know, perking up a bit, because I'm sure they know someone who would like to purchase here in our area. Now, the, I think you may have touched on this a bit with regards to the emergency and public service services here in the county. And it's divided between the city, responsibility is divided between the county and the city, as are the costs to a certain extent. Okay, would you just hit that again?
Sure. In regards to public safety in total, the sheriff's budget is presented to the county commission, and we approve that budget. In addition to that budget, there's additional funds that come from the city of Palm Coast for enhanced services. And the sheriff has different staff dedicated just for community policing within the city of Palm Coast based on those funds. As far as fire and emergency services, the fire departments are split. So the fire department in Palm Coast services within the city limits, and we take over the unincorporated. But we have an interlocal agreement with the city of Bonnell where we also supply fire services to the city of Bonnell. Which is why, when they're proposing all these developments, we're very active with them to make sure that the developers are covering locations for new fire stations, constructing new fire stations, and...
So new, new fire stations? So new fire stations will be constructed in these new developments? Because I think I heard, what, 6,000 homes being developed in one of those?
Right, and those are, the big residential one in Banell is a planned unit development. So there's opportunities when they come in with a large-scale planned development that we sit down and we talk about those impacts and negotiate how the developer can ease the pain for us existing residents so that we don't have taxes coming out from our existing residents to pay for those improvements. So I can say, within Banell, there is a location and the construction of a fire station with donation of equipment built into that agreement to cover that development. But now, I did mention that our emergency services, fire rescue, the paramedics are countywide. That is a countywide service. So you'll see our, inside, if you look inside a Palm Coast fire department and the bays are open, you'll see Palm Coast labeled "Fire Trucks" and then a Flagler County Fire Rescue next to it. And so we've worked really close with them to make sure we have our fire rescue is dispatched along with their fire departments from their stations.
I was telling someone earlier in the evening, I turned on the water at home in the kitchen, and I hit the spray function on the kitchen faucet. And I noticed that the pressure was not as great as it used to be. I have heard that there are issues with the water treatment plants in Palm Coast, and we may have to go to someone else to get the answer to this. But does the county have any role in the development and preservation of water treatment plants that are serving the area?
So the, Flagler County does not own a utility. At one time, we bought the Plantation Bay Utility years ago, and that turned out to be a bad investment for the county. So we, in turn, sold it back to what is called the Florida Government Utility Authority. So we sold the utility back to a larger statewide government utility authority. City of Palm Coast operates all of their own utilities for their citizens within the city of Palm Coast, but they also serve unincorporated residents, like in the hammock. So they'll be residents that aren't in the city limits, but they get served by the expansion of water on the barrier island. But they pay a surcharge. So the city of Palm Coast will charge them an extra 25% for their water rates because they're not in the city limits. But I'll go back to one of the comments you said about water treatment. Water treatment plants aren't going to affect water pressure. So we have water treatment plants and we have water plants. So two different functions for each of those. But as the city grows, I think most everybody, I'm a Palm Coast resident, so on city water. And I feel, you know, the effects of the current decisions to raise water rates. But for the long-term viability of the system, those type of investments are going to be necessary.
Now, these investments that are being made and the improvements that are being suggested, are they to serve the existing population? Or are they taking into consideration the fact that 10, 15 years down the road, our population will probably exceed 200,000? Is this just a patchwork kind of thing, or are we looking to the future?
I would say that the current rate structure is backing up the expansion of the water utilities within Palm Coast. They do know that they need additional water for the growth, and that includes our water treatment plants and water. So they are planning long-term. They just went through that process at the city, where they talked about their long-range capital plans and the investments that'll have to be made. They've got some requests to the legislature for additional funding from, directly from the legislature, and they're hoping that they'll be successful in bringing more of those funds back.
Great. You probably, you remember that in my introductory remarks, I mentioned that one of our key objectives for the coming years are to increase the presence and influence of the black community in the politics of Flagler County and, of course, Palm Coast. What do you see, what are ways in which you think we can be more effective in terms of exerting our presence, our influence on operations, political operations here in Flagler County?
Okay.
And how can we get some of those good government jobs?
I'll skip to the second part really quick, only that, you know, all of our openings are published. So if anybody is in need of a job, they should be, and want to stay local, they should be constantly scouring each of the local websites for the HR departments for all job openings that are in the county. They're all done in a transparent fashion and open to the public. Our veterans get additional guarantees that they will get an interview. So if you apply as a veteran for a position, you'll get an interview. And so that we make sure that we give them, you know, the opportunity face-to-face to be able to talk with the hiring people. And the first one is really a, I don't know that I have the answer for that. It takes, it takes really early groundwork. Good candidates sometimes can pop out of nowhere. But I think a good candidate is, is not, I wouldn't say groomed, but is, there's a pattern that a good candidate to be well-received and popular probably has to go through. And you have to be entrenched in the community first and foremost. I think people like to see people that aren't brand-new, but have been around a little while and have a track record of being involved in the community through, it could be through nonprofits, through church, through other avenues. And you start putting together a resume of community involvement. To me, those types of things really hit home. And then, you know, you don't necessarily have to be a teacher or a school administrator to be a good school board member. I had no experience in school administration. I wasn't a teacher. When I ran for school board, I was just a frustrated parent. I saw things that I didn't agree with happening and thought that if you're going to make a change, you know, the best person to make that change is yourself, if you want to see it done right or if you want to see change happen. And then, you know, so the reasons behind that can vary. But at the time, I had, you know, established a track record with the Early Learning Coalition, Flagler Volusia. I spent time on the Economic Development Board at the time. The economic, I can't remember the name of it at the time. And with Rotary and with the Chamber. So had done some background work before I made that plunge into public service in order to get to know the community a little bit better. You know, even though my family's been here 53 years, I spent some time in Jacksonville chasing work. Even back in the day, there weren't a ton of jobs back here in Flagler County. But I moved to Jacksonville to get some good, high-quality work. And then opportunities allowed me to come back here and bring my family with me and raise my family in Flagler County. Best thing, best thing ever. But coming back to town, right, after not being involved day-to-day, I knew, I didn't have goals at the time of being elected official, but I just had the goal of wanting to help the community. And those things translate, I think, to people.
Before we close out our part of this conversation and go to some audience participation, can you close out by telling us what you see as the county's top priorities for the coming year?
Absolutely. We are challenged right now with, we have put together a beach management plan to protect the beach long-term. I've talked about what I think are, you know, is the basis for establishing a renourished and a long-term plan to protect the beach. It has to do with our quality of life. It has to do with an economic base for the county long-term and really protecting what, you know, having lived here a long time, of what I see and what I remember growing up is what Flagler County is. And in the future, protecting the beach long-term is critically important. So we are struggling with a funding plan to be able to protect the beach long-term. It's going to require some really hard conversations with the five commissioners. Some decisions can be made with a simple majority, others require supermajority. And getting a supermajority of four is a lot harder than it seems. And we couldn't get over that hurdle for the half-penny sales tax. But we're going to be, we'll be coming back together because we are going to be, the next beach renourishment that you'll see is going to be over the summer of '26. So we're doing permitting and bidding right now. And you'll see the offshore pumping for the next phase of beach nourishment. You know, we have four phases on the beach, so that would be the second phase, the second beach. And then the other one is really economic development is critical for us to get some of the burden from our residential property tax off of our residents and onto more businesses. We have the airport, which is a great location that we've, county is, that is a county property, and the county has worked hard. We have a brand-new economic development director who kind came to us from Volusia County. And we've got great, we've got some really good leads that we're working on at the airport. So hopefully, we can announce some things at the airport within the next few months. But we really do need to focus on economic development. There's thoughts out there that, you know, the city and the county both have economic development departments separate from each other. They work together, but, you know, is there a path forward where we have a combined, single economic development team? Again, we had it in the past, but there's, Howard Holly, I think most of you know Howard. He's been working with the museum, the Black History Museum in St. John's County. And he spent a lot of time in Tallahassee and Leon County. And they have a combined economic development program, Economic Vitality Program, they call it. And he thinks that that's a really good basis for something that Palm Coast and Flagler County could follow. So those are discussions we'll be having in the next year as well.
Is everyone familiar with the African-American History Museum that's come into state? Let me ask you, Mr. Dase. I know this is sort of passe in terms of government initiatives these days, but is there any special effort being made to make sure that in the course of all of this economic development around the airport and other areas within the county, that the economic development includes opportunities for minority-owned women-owned businesses?
The large projects that really the economic development teams look at, I don't think there's, that there's those types of programs when we're out there trying to bring in large-scale, high-tech, high-wage jobs to the county. I know when, there were incentives built into our policies for locally-owned, right? When we have large bids, there were incentives for locally-owned companies to be able to be moved up. But if it's a federally funded project, those local priorities don't qualify. And in, as incentives under economic development, I can't recall the specifics of what we have in place for minority-owned businesses. That'd be something I'll have to get back with you on. Most of the time, there are incentives for that, but I can't speak to the specifics of what the county has.
Sounds like a congressional hearing. I'll get back to you on that, Senator.
I know that I had all the answers. I have a lot, but I hope that I have them all.
Okay. Well, you've done very well, and I certainly appreciate your responses so far. I would like to give others an opportunity to pose some of the questions they may have. I think, okay, we have one over here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andy, for the honorable Mr. Andy Dase. Thank you so much for coming to talk to us. I have two questions. All right. Number one, is it a true statement to say that the constitutional officers, tax collector, tax appraiser, supervisor election, do they report to the county commissioner?
No, they have to ask us to fund their budget. But even that has caveats. Like if we, the sheriff and us get into a squabble over a budget and we don't fund his request, he can go to the governor and ask that it be funded. So there's, and I think through the property appraiser and the tax collector, actually, their budgets are approved at the state level, even though they have to come through us and we negotiate specifics with them based on the allocations that we receive, you know, through property taxes. Their final authority rests with somebody else and not us. So it's kind of a two-step process. So even though they do come to us and we set budgets and we go through that process with them, there's another authority that ultimately is in charge of approving their budget that they can appeal to, if you will.
So if the supervisor election needed to get more equipment, would they come to you?
Actually, the supervisor's the only one that can't appeal it. So the supervisor and their negotiations with the commission is the final statement. So they, we work that out with the supervisor. The others have outs that they can pursue.
Now, a second question is, could you, we had a discussion that Jan Stolten, who's here by the way, the DEC of Flagler County, we had a discussion in her office today about CDDs, Community Development Districts. We have a few of those in Flagler County, you know, one of which most of us know of at Grand Zero. Could you explain the relationship between the county and the CDDs and whether it's a process or not from a county standpoint?
Sure. Really, the community development districts are just internal funding mechanisms so that they can have control over their infrastructure and improvements. And a lot of them, they'll be responsible for maintaining their own roadways, maintaining the ponds and the drainage systems. All those have to be maintained on a regular basis. So those CDDs allow them to collect funds through their residents to be able to support. And in many instances, they have really elaborate recreational facilities. And those same funds are utilized to help support those as well. So we don't have much, other than we approve them when they come through the development stage, when they come and ask for their entitlements and development rights. We usually, at the same time, if they're going to be formed as a CDD, they have to get county approval.
Richard, I see you have a question in the back.
Yes, I would like to ask about public schools and charter schools. People that like charter schools, why don't they accumulate their own money instead of taking money from the public schools?
All right, great question. And a big debate that's going on right now between parental choice and properly funding public schools. There's a middle ground that I think hasn't been met yet in that regard, but- There's a middle ground that I think hasn't been met yet in that regard, but there's no doubt that through the scholarships process that's open now, a lot of money is being diverted that used to go to public schools, and being diverted to charter, not charters, but some charters, because you can pay through the charter, but mainly these private schools or church-based schools. So I don't know if there's a direct, I have a direct answer for you, other than there's basis for parental choice and where they want to have their children go to school, but not to the detriment of properly funding our public schools.
Richard has one. Go ahead, Richard. Richard, no, Richard in the back.
I have a question. I have two questions. There is a large senior citizen population in the county, and in the last couple of weeks, we had several accidents where seniors have had accidents due to medical conditions. I noticed on your flyer that it says public transportation. When are we going to get a public transportation in the county? That's number one question.
Well, we have public transportation through the county. It's an on-call system. It's not a big-city, you know, constant route system. But you have to call the county and make an appointment, and they will come to your house and pick you up and drop you off, and then, within a timeline that's been established, pick you back up and take you home. So we have, at a very minimal cost for those services, we run those, I'm sure you've seen those buses run around town. They're all handicap accessible, so anybody with mobility issues can use it, but they're a great service. It's just a, for us, it's really the only public transportation system we can afford to operate at this time. We're just not at the size that would be able to justify a fixed route system. And there's really some complications with the way ITT was designed, that'll have to be, some hurdles that'll have to be crossed to get a fixed route in the future, just because of the ways the infrastructure is designed in Palm Coast. The county, the disadvantaged, sorry, the Flagler County disadvantaged transportation can be found on the website, in our Flagler County website, so it's easily accessible to be able to find the number to call.
You have a second question?
Yes, my second question is, you told about county assistance for people who wanted to buy a house, but if people that are wanting to rent, because there are young people, young people in town who are not ready to buy, but they're looking to rent and paying first life and security, that's almost $6,000 or more. So is there any assistance from the county for people who are looking to rent?
Yeah, again, I would direct them to our Health and Human Services. I believe there are programs for them, I don't know the specifics, but our Debbie at the Health and Human Services, she's the person who works with our Affordable Housing Committee, she's our, she's the go-to person, and would be the one I would call at the county.
Richard? I was going to introduce her later, but she has a question, so I'll take this opportunity to present the chair of the Democratic Executive Committee here in Flagler County. I think many of you know her, Jan Sullivan. And I will also take this opportunity to introduce her right-hand person, Debbie Mott. So really glad that both of them came out to participate this evening.
Hello there. As the lady just said, we are a community, at least in this room, except perhaps two people who are on Medicare, of Medicare age. As of July, the one big beautiful bill act has cut off the premium subsidies for people who did not get, who were not of Medicare age, did not, do not get corporate Medicare, and had to essentially purchase their own insurance for themselves and their family. I know that the county, this is not a county service, that I know that you all are not the ones who provide this, who do this. But I did do some research, and it appears there's about 20,000 residents in Flagler County who are currently covered by insurance that they purchased themselves. As of the end of this year, about 10,000, actually 53% of the 20,000 people of Flagler County will not be able to afford their premiums next year because they will not get help from the government. This is not anything you caused, but it certainly is going to be something you feel, and something that we all will feel in Flagler County. When half of the people who are currently covered by insurance they buy, they are no longer covered. Car payments won't get paid, utility bills won't get paid, whatever, and people will be going to the ERs, and they will be backing up the ERs. So it's going to impact us all, if not personally, if with our finances. Has there been any discussion at the county about what to do when this occurs?
Real short, no. And I would hope that the stalemate gets broken soon, and both parts of our government and Washington come back together and negotiate and get a long-term spending bill done. So that would be, that would solve a lot of things if they got back together, get the government back open, negotiate, get a long-term funding plan established, and hopefully some of those questions you raised will be answered. But I am not the federal expert at all on healthcare. But no, we haven't looked at potential impacts on the county just yet.
Okay, thank you. Richard, I agree.
I also have two questions, and hopefully they'll be short. But the first one is, I know that other people have noticed, but sometimes I'm concerned about the quality of houses that are being built. Like on Route One, I don't even know if there's any cement anywhere, and it's just kind of, I don't even know what to call it, wood. And the same with Royal Tombs, where the swamp was on Town Center, it just looks like a catastrophe waiting to happen, because they don't seem sturdy to me. And that's just a civilian, I've never built a house, I've used a hammer once or twice, but, you know, so, what's the quality of the houses? Have people raised this issue? Do you think the same?
Well, whether it is concrete or stick, as they are called, they all have to meet the Florida Building Code. So they have the same requirements for hurricane resistance, straps to the roof, so they are all built to the Florida's Building Code, which is one of the strictest building codes in the nation. So they all have to meet that requirement.
Well, I can't help but think of all the buildings that collapsed too here and fall up. You know what I mean? Not here in Palm Coast, but just the quality of houses. I'm just concerned about that, because it still looks like a catastrophe. I don't see anything that would secure it anymore, but then I'm just looking at, yeah. Sorry, I want to hear that. So my second question quickly is, also upfront in Tallahassee, that there, it looks like that our governor wants taxes lowered for people, and except with, things can be lowered, but not the paid police officers, that other things can be lowered as a result of the tax reduction. It hasn't happened yet, but it's on, it's likely enough to be happening this year with Tallahassee. So have you all been talking about that?
We monitor it regularly.
Yeah, so what's going to happen if that goes through?
I mean, just today, the governor was insulting the House members by saying that their plan, the three plans that they put together were garbage, and I see a continuation of last year where nobody could get along. And that's, and that's, the Republicans couldn't get along in Tallahassee, and there was too much infighting, and nothing got done. We were warned that by Senator Leake when he spoke to us at the Tiger Bay Club, that he was afraid that if that infighting continued, it was going to limit, you know, some effective legislation for this coming year. So the plan, then, from what I understand, is there'll be a push to get something on as a constitutional amendment for the voters to vote on. That's the governor's plan, that's what he wants to see. Whether they get to that point, I have no idea, or what it looks like, because part of my presentation was to talk about, you know, where does our tax money go? And if we have significant reductions, you know, that affects schools, it affects police, it affects fire, a lot of basic safety issues within the community. So we don't know yet where that's going to go. You know, if we have time, I'll talk about, you know, the difference between established homesteaded properties and the effect that they've seen in the last 15 years versus newer people that have come into the county. But I did research on my own home, so I've lived in my home since roughly 2000, 2001. But the data from the property appraiser and the tax collector over the last 15 years basically shows that our taxes have gone up about 4% over the 15-year period, where my property values have increased almost twofold, about 86%, 89%. So there's a, the fear that property taxes are too high is felt differently by different people within the community. A longtime homesteaded person like myself is not feeling the same impact in property tax increases versus somebody who's moved, or somebody who's come from out of the county and is residing now here, so their tax burden is proportionally different than mine. So a $350,000 house that they move into today, they're paying significantly more than the same value house that I've had homesteaded for, since 2000. So those, I think what you're hearing is a lot of the newer people that have moved into town, say, within the past five years, so there's some sticker shock when they come, because their neighbor is paying significantly less taxes than they are. So I don't, you know, as I look at mine, I didn't see the astronomical increases. You know, from the county's perspective, we've reduced millage consistently, a small, purposeful reduction in millage. Even though property taxes, right, you should, we'd be reducing millage when property taxes are rising, because when property taxes fall, you're going to have to raise that millage again to fund your services, but we have a max, we have, you can't go above 10 mills. So our current 8.1 mills at the county, while property values are rising, we have to continue to lower those, because one day, when the economy isn't great and property values fall, and it'll happen again one day, we need that room at the top, because we will have to raise millage to keep certain services alive. Once you hit 10, you're stuck. I mean, you just can't go, statute doesn't allow you to go above 10. So don't know that I properly addressed that, other than giving some background data. We don't know what's going to come to us yet from Tallahassee, but we monitor it daily. We have lobbyists that we do pay for that give us information on a day-to-day basis. We have really great relationships with Senator Leake and Representative Greco, so when they hear things that are moving. I'm an executive board member to the Small County Coalition, I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Florida Association of Counties, so those, both of those organizations are watching this property tax issue like a hawk, and every time there's movement, we get notified.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
What would you say is the biggest issue that the commission, the county commissioners are dealing with now? In the past, it might have been water, it might have been agriculture, it might have been flooding, which I don't know if that carries over to the county, or if that's just Palm Coast. But what would you say is the biggest issue that the county is facing right now?
Sure. We talked briefly about beach and renourishment, and establishing a long-term plan for funding the beach, and we talked about economic development. I would say some of the ones that you did mention are also high on the list. One is flooding and resiliency. We just received a compound flooding analysis by the Northeast Florida Regional Council, which is going to help us identify and go after grants to be able to fortify some of the problems that we experience with compound flooding and the damage it's causing to infrastructure. The West Side, the unincorporated West Side, the farming community deals with flooding in its own capacity, where fields are saturated for days and weeks, ditches aren't draining like they used to. So we are constantly having a program to stay after our drainage issues, and really, you know, we don't have, it's basically a flat county, so drainage issues at one point, water doesn't know boundaries, doesn't know city limit boundaries, so we have to be working with our neighbors on water and water quality issues and flooding issues. So flooding is one that we have at our top priority. Transportation, infrastructure is the other one. We all are dumping traffic onto Highway 100, the city of Palm Coast, but also, you know, with the unincorporated parts of the county, there's still some sites on 100 that are unincorporated, brand-new developments that even come in off of Old Kings Road or Belt Air, they all feed to 100 eventually, and that's our bottleneck right now. And the new development that is coming through the city, that's one of the main issues that the city council is dealing with, is trying to get some immediate improvements to 100 to kind of alleviate some of the bottlenecks. And then the other ones, I would say, you know, continuing to be able to fund public safety. We constantly struggle to keep up with our paramedics and our fire personnel. We just hired 15 in order to keep up, but that is, funding for public safety is very hard right now. But I think those are the, I think we pretty much hit a lot of those with transportation and flooding, economic development, and the beach.
Another question. This is, it probably hasn't affected us, but with the efforts to dismantle the government on a federal level, has it dropped down to Flagler County in any way? Do we see that we're having to provide anything, services, or management to things that normally you would expect the federal government to provide that they dismantled?
Sure, good question. I would say the one part that we've felt is with federal funding that we get for the beach, or other infrastructure projects, because we will get, there are times when we get federal funds for some of the drainage. A lot of it is mostly, I wouldn't say most of it is state, but specifically with beach nourishment, federal funding is critical, and with the, any reductions in federal funding or even changes in leadership can affect us. It slows down permitting and puts projects behind schedule, and then we've seen all that happen. We had a permit that stood stagnant for six months, all it needed was a signature, and we had to go lobby Senator Fine and others to be able to get that signature in place, and finally Senator Fine got it done. If you recall, we had a, he had a big press conference about it. So, you know, we appreciate the help to get those things moving, but it's frustrating when those things happen. And it's really a matter of the change in personnel and some of the chaos, if you will, that accompanies that.
Yes, Richard?
Yes, sir.
I had a comment and a question. I'm a homeowner here in Palm Coast. I'm a homeowner here in Palm Coast for about 10 years, and I put in a request online to get my swell pipe cleaned out, along with my neighbor across the street, he's about 75, 78, you know, I'm a scaretaker, and I filled out all of, you know, the necessary information, and that's been about three months ago, and I've yet to hear from Palm Coast about cleaning out, you know, his swell pipe and mine. And, you know, when it rains here, you know, it's almost like a little pond in front of your house, you know, mosquitoes, tadpoles and stuff like that, that's just a, that was just a comment, and I had a question, why can't you comment on or expound on the lack of public transportation, you know, in this, in this area?
Sure.
Well, the first one is, anything, when a resident talks to me about something going on in Palm Coast, I direct them to the Palm Coast Connect website, and it sounds like you did that, but if you didn't, when I, whenever I've done something, I have a problem with my pep tank or swell-related issues, I, you know, I get pretty good response back from the city. I would make sure you go through their online routing system because that's, that has checks and balances in it, they, the managers can see if the people are appropriately responding, and they can check and see if, if, if those calls are getting responded to, so make sure, you know, phone calls, not so much anymore, you've got to do it in writing, either go through Palm Coast Connect or email the appropriate person, but my first, I would tell you to go through Palm Coast Connect. And then what was your second one?
Public transportation.
Yeah, we talked about public transportation, and we have a county-operated system, but it's an on-call basis, you have to call the county and schedule a time, that's, it's, you know, we get funding assistance through the Northeast Florida Regional Council for this, we've done studies, there's, it's, the amount to do a fixed route system in Flagler County through Palm Coast is astronomical, there's just not the ability to fund a fixed route yet, but we do have the on-call system.
All right, sir, thank you. Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Last question.
Oh, well, I'm sort of following up on the gentleman about the swells, and I went through that process, and I did that now, almost four years ago, and you were right, they came out and they looked, the supervisor came and spoke to me and said, "Well, it's going to be about two more years before they can do my area, my street," and the reason they gave was that they don't have enough staff, they only have two crews that has to do all of Palm Coast. Okay, fine, and then I attended another meeting with, I guess it was a city manager, I don't know, one of the city managers, and I asked the swell question, just like the gentleman did, and they said, "Well, we have priority staff, the aquifers, then the storm drainage, and then maybe the swells." And so that, so then I said, "Oh, does that mean now I have to wait an additional five years before you can come and take care of this?" And they couldn't answer. So how can we remedy that? And it may not be for you to do, but I'm still contacting Palm Coast Connect, and they just come back and say, "Oh, we're not, we don't have enough manpower to be able to take care of that."
Right. What I will say, because I've sat through some of the city's budget meetings and listened to what they're doing, again, I'm a, I'm a Palm Coast resident, I'm really curious as to what goes on within the city and city government as well. They do, they do have an issue with staff for the swell program, so they have a department for the swells, they do have a priority list in their mind that they're going through the city. I, I, I'm pretty sure that they were hiring more people this year for the swell program because that is probably the one, the most common, right, complaints the city council members get, so that is an area that they want to get resolved and have happy customers. But, again, all I can do is recommend you go through that route, it may not get yours done immediately because they have a system in place that they're going through. If there's something immediately that's plugging it or that they can remedy when they go out there, they'll do it, but if it means going up and down your street, which just happened on mine, but it was the opposite side of the street, I was like, "Why isn't it my side, though?"
Well, I had eight of them in my, okay, so, so that still wasn't enough, so I don't know what else we would have to do.
And, and, you know, what works is using your three minutes at the city council meeting to express your displeasure, and, and they will appoint you to a staff member in the back of the council chambers to speak to you after your three minutes, and, and that may be helpful, but I, you know, so if you really want to put a face to your problem, go to the city council, talk your three minutes, and they'll, they'll give you a staff person that you can talk to.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Andy, thank you so, thank you so much for your participation.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
And as our tagline says on our Community Conversations banner, we hope for rational, reasonable discussion of these serious issues. We have had that this evening, in large part thanks to you, and we certainly appreciate your coming and spending the time with us. Before, yeah, thank you. During the course of his remarks, Andy mentioned that candidates come out of nowhere, and I may have failed to mention that the, we are cooperating with the Democratic Executive Committee headed by Jan Sullivan that spoke earlier, and we have launched a candidate development program, they have, and we are cooperating with them, and one of the first respondents to that program is with us this evening. I don't want to surprise her with an expectation of her saying anything, but I would like you to meet Delana Gallery, who is a candidate for City Council, District 4, she has filed, she is now participating in the development program that is under the direction of the Executive Committee. Ralph and I are involved in that process. Delana, just stand up and let the folks see you for a minute. And, well, go ahead, Ralph is giving you the mic, don't go too far, though.
Good evening, my name is Delana Gallery, I currently live in the arts section of Palm Coast, I've been here for about five years, recently just graduated from the University of Central Florida with a bachelor's degree in political science, I'm super excited to be submitted, or be in the running, and I'm really excited to get out into the community and help us all out to try to get a bid, because we need one, for sure. With the swell problems, I feel you, I'm there too, I can barely cut my grass right now, so I understand, but I'm here to help, and any questions that you guys have for me, don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
We look forward to seeing more of you in the future. I hope this event has been helpful to you. Keep in mind that it is our first stab at this, and hopefully, if there were any glaring weaknesses in our operation, let us know, and we look forward to working on improving those. Something like this does not happen with just one person, of course. I would like you to meet the Executive Committee of the Flagler County Democratic Black Caucus. If they would stand, please. We have Ralph, we have Al Rippon, Clarissa Johnson is our secretary, will be given to my left, Kai Jones in the back is our second vice president. Did I cover everyone? Yes. Al Rippon, who volunteered his services as a video officer, and I've had the pleasure of working with him once before. Now, the most important attendees today are our members, and we really appreciate our members. For our members, please stand. I know not all of you are members, but those who are members of the Black Caucus, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much for your support, your support is greatly needed and it is very much appreciated. Now, having said all of those good things, there are, what, over 11,000 African-American residents here in the county, and I think we have several new members that joined tonight, I'm four?
Six.
Six, all right, six new members. Are they still here? Are they among them?
The ones that's...
Thank you, thank you. My point is, there are 11,000 and a half African-American residents of Flagler County. We have 28 members. We ought to be ashamed of ourselves. We must do better, I'm sure we will do better, and if there's anything that you think we can do to do better, let us know, we're open to suggestions, and we're willing to work hard at the process. Again, Andy, thank you so much, this was great, and we're trying on the box, I think it went well, and we'll practice, and we'll see if we can get a better hearing of your next time, but, thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you the next time. I think our next session will be January 10th. I don't know exactly who the speaker will be, it will be someone of significance to our lives here in Flagler County, but look forward to the announcements, and join us next time for another discussion, another conversation. Thank you so much.